To the new item 9A, which is a resolution authorizing retention of independent legal counsel to represent Clerk Karen Springer in the November 2017 lawsuit. Need a motion to adopt and then we can discuss this.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tocco, supported by Commissioner Brown. Any comments on this? Crystal, get me up on this. Great. I don't have any speakers on this. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Carabelli.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to ask about the previous resolution that we had passed at this time as far as where we're at with that, how much we've stretched progress of that?
As far as the other independent counsel, we did get a little information on that, but not much yet. As far as the questions that were asked yesterday about any breakdown in communication between the clerk and the independent counsel hired for, or the budget amount, we have been reported, have no reported problems in that issue yet, or in the lawsuit. We don't have a number on the amount that's been spent yet.
Do you ask at this time? Or is that not appropriate?
I don't...
I don't think Mr. Anderson's here.
Yeah, Mr. Anderson's here, or Mr. Peacock would be here. They would know the exact amount on that, so I don't think we have the right people to ask that question.
Oh, sorry. Also, just give us a written report is all. Thank you.
Yes, and we did ask for that today from Scott Anderson, or, yes. And we haven't received it yet, but he did note that there was no problems at this time. Okay. No other speakers? Motion passes 12 to 0. Thank you. Moving on to item 9B. 9B is going to be a hearing for the clerk to respond to Resolution R. 17954. Ms. Springer gave us a written report, and it was also requested that she come here and under oath give us a verbal report on any follow-up questions that we might have for her in this matter. Ms. Springer, could you come up to the podium, please? Hmm? There we are.
I think everybody logged in. It's his last, he said the last oath passed 12-0. There are 13 people here.
Yes. We'll get Mike. Excuse me for one minute, just having a little technical difficulty. Mike, Don's system's up. Where was the oath that you didn't? Ms. Springer, thank you. Initially, I want to thank you for the obvious time and care you put into the document you submitted to the commission Tuesday afternoon. We know this is a busy time for you with everything going on, and we appreciate you getting that to us in a timely fashion. Before we get to any of the questions that the commissioners have, I just want to clarify some of the things that have been going on around the media and the attention drawn to, well, MCL 4611 subsection K. This is put in the statute to provide the commission needed information to address questions asked and concerns raised by individual commissioners, county officials, citizens, and businesses of the county. Its intent is to gather information and to ask follow-up questions to ensure commissioners fully understand the issues that we are asking about. For several months, questions have been asked behind closed doors and with the media, and this is our view that a public discussion on this is warranted. Some media accounts indicate that the executive has stated this procedure has never been used before, and that it's overreaching and potentially abusive. So I just wanted to clarify some of those points. We don't know how many times that MCL 4611 has been used in the state. Unless it was actually litigated, we would have no idea how many times it's been used. However, it was used at least one time in Alcona County, and that case closed up, I believe, in 2011. In that case, the actual treasurer was removed from office based on this statute. He failed to report. It wasn't that the commission didn't like his answers, it was that he failed to follow the procedure requested of him, authorized by this statute. This board hasn't taken any action that indicates an attempt to remove or consider removal of any county official, and individual commissioners have indicated and responded to the media basically what the statute says. We've been asked questions, we were looking for information. One of the possibilities in the statute, and it's only a paragraph long, it's very easy to read, states that if the individual fails to respond, that removal is possible by two-thirds of the vote of the commission. That being said, Ms. Springer responded. We don't have to like the answers, we don't have to believe the answers, they have to be representative of at least an answer to the question that was posed. You know, the statute's an important tool, the whole county officials accounted to, accountable through those who, you know, have been elected to represent the citizens. And the possible sanction removal for failing to report or provided bond makes it necessary for county officials to take any county commission directions for reporting seriously. So that's why that type of sanction is in there. And it's a possibility, and it's a vague possibility, but this means that when the commission has some questions, you have to come and answer, right? So that's really what this statute is all about. It allows us to get to the bottom of problems that we see going on in the county. And it may be a potential problem, it may be a real problem, but it gives us the right to ask these questions. So, back to it. Clerk Springer, all the commissioners have likely, I'm sure thoroughly reviewed the documents you submitted on Tuesday. So our intent is not to hear a repetition of the answers that you've already given. We're not going to sit here and ask you every question on there. We have some follow-up questions, some clarifying questions, and I'm going to kind of just go through the procedure that we're going to use. I have a list of questions here. They're broken down sometimes into sub-subparts. Offer you the opportunity to give us your answers. We would appreciate your answers being as succinct as possible. I'm going to offer each commissioner, after the question is answered, an opportunity to ask any follow-up questions on that particular question, topic that was posed. Then we're going to move to the next question. There's maybe 13 questions or so in here that we're going to ask. Some of them should be answered very easy by you. A lot of them may not have follow-up questions. At the end of this, I'm going to offer the opportunity for each commissioner, if a topic hasn't been touched that you have a particular question on that you would like an answer for, I will offer that time to the commissioners also to come in with questions off the list here. Now, remember, please, commissioners, that we do have several lawsuits going on. These questions that you might ask really have to be directed towards the topics of the questions that we had asked originally in the report, so that we don't get into any legal disputes, and we're not talking about things out of sorts that we shouldn't be talking about. So, before we begin, I'd like to swear you in, because this is also under oath, so if you would, please raise your right hand.
Before I swear in, I have a statement to make.
Okay.
Okay.
That statement should be under oath.
It's a thank you.
We're not asking any questions at this point.
I think a thank you is not necessary under oath.
Go ahead.
I just want to thank the employees and register deeds, my staff in the clerk's office, and everyone who participated in helping me research, do the fact-finding, and give an honest answer. I will tell you, I am not an encyclopedia or a computer that can just come up with an answer. Part of my experience in this office has been learning on the job and getting directions from good, honest individuals who's been in the county for many, many years. And they have the ability and skills to do their job. And some of them do it not only 100%, but 200%. And I really recognize their dedication, their professional skills, and the reason and the motive behind why they do their jobs so well. Because they love this county. They are proud to be a member of Macomb County. And that's why I wanted to say this statement. I especially sincerely thank my staff. They are wonderful people, they have a heart of gold, and I commend them for the dedication that they gave the county all these years. So thank you for letting me say this.
Thank you. Now, if you don't mind, raise your right hand. Do you affirm that the statements you make and information you provide today will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. So, we're going to start with the questions, and some of them, they pull off of the questions that we've asked already, so they should be somewhat familiar to you, but some of them just need some more clarification. So question number one, what if any authority do you believe you have to spend any county funds to pay legal fees for outside legal counsel?
That is one of the questions. Could you tell me where the question was?
You know what, I'm not... How about if we get to this? One of the answers that you gave was that you would be able to transfer between line items in your budget to pay for outside legal fees. What line item, if any, in the clerk and register of deed budgets can be expended to pay legal fees for outside counsel? Do you know that?
The response I remember was the experience I had the first time I asked to take it out of the line item for special projects. It was just $15,000 in this experience I had before the Board of Commissioners. It was denied to use that line item. There is another process that goes through the process of the executive branch and the Board of Commissioners, writing the resolution and asking for the amount to be included in your budget. That was not successful for me this year. This is my first budget. I'm learning how to do things better and more efficiently.
Okay. I'm going to veer off for one second and give one more explanation on your retention of outside counsel in your requests. You've come to us a couple of times for retention of outside counsel and asked the board specifically to approve it. There's two ways to get outside counsel for you. One is to come to the board specifically and ask, and the other one is to go through corporation counsel. And if they can't represent you, then they would then provide an outside counsel with the board's approval. The first time that you came to us, we told you how to do that. You have to tell us where you'll be getting the money, who you would be hiring, what their hourly rate is, and what the expected amount of their service is going to be. The first time you came to us, you didn't give us that. You asked for $15,000, and that was it. You didn't tell us what kind of rate you were getting for that $15,000, or what the estimated total was going to be, you just came with the number. So we denied it. The second time you came to us in that manner, you did the same thing. You asked for $100,000, and you didn't give us any of the other information that we require of someone coming in asking for that serve, for us to approve independent counsel. The other way is when you go to the corporation counsel, and then they approve or deny, recommend or don't recommend you getting counsel. When they recommend it, you come to us and we approve it. And last time, we approved it, and this time, we approved it. So I do want to point out that we are not up here to deny you counsel. When we've denied it, be in the past, when you've come to us without the proper, not following the proper procedures, not only did you not follow the proper procedures, but our corporation counsel, you know, recommended against you being afforded this counsel also. And there's different reasons for that, depends on who the lawsuit is between and how it all works. But I just wanted to point out that there's been also a lot of false accusations out there that the board is just against giving you counsel. And this is the second time that we've afforded, based on the resolution we just passed, you to have counsel for your legal concerns. So back to the questions. There's a few really important things going on with the lean and the e-filing. And I just want to know, do you understand the consequences of failing to keep the lean, which is law enforcement information network filings up to date? Do you understand that persons can be wrongfully arrested and jailed?
Yes, I do.
Do you understand that a person who should be arrested might avoid arrest and therefore commit other crimes because it was not properly placed into the lean system that the officers might have, or that have with them? It's not in there? They don't know that there's even a warrant out for this person? Are you aware that that's a possibility out there of being so far behind on this lean program?
Yes.
Do you also understand that the law enforcement officers may stop and engage with the person without knowing of outstanding warrants, putting their own lives in jeopardy?
Yes.
And do you understand that the county can be sued and be liable for the consequences of these actions?
Yes.
So, my question is, you failed to tell us when they will be up to date in your answers. When will the lean filings be up to date? And I'm going to say this, I understand that up to date is a term of art. However, there are other communities around that we base our projections on, and we should be somewhere within the realm of those communities of getting these things logged and recorded. So, you didn't give us a time on when this was going to be done. Can you give us a time on when this is going to be caught up to a point where it's not looked at as being out of sorts and out of line with what should be happening in the real world?
The time factor involved on cooperation from not only my department, but from the court area. Because I have a chief deputy supervisor, and there is a delicate matter that I prefer not to get into because of the lawsuit that I'm in, has a relevance to this issue. And the questions that I put already in St. Clair County on how I can have my deputies under the statutory rights of my constitution position as an officer of this court. In that position alone, I should be able to have counter-deputies, meaning not only two deputies, but counter-deputies at will that could do a certain function, that could help alleviate doing that function along with my staff.
Okay.
Because under staff, we have only one person who did it. She retired. To replace her takes training, certification, which for six months during this process, the other person went through the training but didn't get certified. And that certification depended on a test. And I'm working with the people that could help administer it, and I'm even finding out that I could assist by giving that test.
Okay. Clerk Springer, I'm going to ask you one more time. Do you have an idea of, in your mind, when the anticipated time is that these liens will be placed in the proper, will be recorded to catch us up to where we should be?
They're being worked on right now. I don't have enough staff to get to it, or take three people. And I put that in my report, that I want to train three people. It's always been a job of one. It's always been behind, but it was never publicly noted. I am the new county clerk. I think transparency and accountability is the best medicine for good government. And I will stand strong on when there are issues in my offices. I will be happy to explain why to the best of my ability, and to be accountable. If I could do that work, I would be doing it. But I depend on staff that's qualified. And when they leave the office unexpectedly, or they retire, there's a planning that you need to do. So, this was not a planned...
Okay. I have a couple commissioners have questions to this, and Commissioner Tocco?
Thank you. Madam Clerk, your answer to me is unclear as to exactly how many documents that you have that have not been placed into the lean system that should be placed into the lean system. If I add the only two numbers that you submitted together, that totals 4,456 documents. Is that the amount of documents that have not been placed into the lean system?
From what the staff has researched...
I'm asking you, ma'am, how many documents have not been put into lean?
I have not counted them myself.
You were asked to do that.
If I had to manually count that, then I would have done that. I thought this, the question to me, when asked, I go to the people that actually do the work, and I ask them where they're at on doing that task.
They are not the elected official. You are, and you were asked to answer these questions.
I am answering the question.
Are there 4,400 documents that have not been placed into the lean system?
That is what I found, yes.
That there are, is the potential that there are 4,400 people who have not been reported to the police department for have committed crimes? There is the potential for 4,400 people whose driving privileges have not been suspended because of your failure to act? How do you explain that? How do you explain that you have not reached out for help from anybody?
I have.
Who have you asked?
I have asked outreach. I remember coming to the board saying I needed more people, but I didn't elaborate on their duties, because when I found out that the supervisor who was managing this department has some of the abilities to get this task done.
Where is that supervisor?
Well...
You placed her on administrative leave, didn't you?
No, I did not.
Where is she?
She is upstairs on the sixth floor, from what I am told, working, I don't know. We have not communicated since the day...
Why don't you know where your staff is?
To the day she walked off her work for three days without notifying me. I did write a letter to HRLR, and this is a legal issue, so I don't want to get into the semantics of that argument.
Do you understand that you've put the public at risk?
I said yes.
And you have, and how long will it take you to get a staff certified?
I hope immediately.
What is the training period for certification?
They already took the class, and we're just waiting for the test.
And when is that going to happen?
I said immediately. As soon as I get the trainer to schedule it, and I'm working with the state police right now, to get this done immediately.
So right now, are you telling us that you don't have anybody, so that this backlog is going to continue until somebody is certified?
Right now, they brought the supervisors back, and I'm confident that she will step forward and start doing this task.
So you have one person responsible for 4,400 entries?
There would be three, added to the one that retired that I asked to bring back temporarily as a temp. And I don't want to get into the semantics of a debate of why it was turned down, but it was denied.
That's not acceptable. It's not acceptable, and maybe you should explain to the board what the importance of lean is. What exactly is lean?
It is very important.
And what is it?
We just discussed the importance of a lean. People need to know when they get pulled over adequately, what and where the charges are against them, whether they're dropped, or whether they're still pending, whether they're on record. So sometimes they are taken off. Yes, it's a very critical, important task. It was not monitored when I first came in, and I monitor it because it is a very serious issue, especially when my supervisor left.
So that the board is aware the lean system works through the courts? So when a person is convicted of a crime, that is supposed to go into the law enforcement network information system? It's a statewide process, a statewide database, that when a person is pulled over, their conviction should be registered. When a person goes to another court, their conviction should be contained in those documents. When there is a personal protection order, that gets entered into lean, so that the police know when they go to a domestic dispute whether or not there's a personal protection order against that person. We have 4,400 documents that have not been placed into lean. We have a certification process. It's a very confidential process. Not everybody can do lean. It requires special training, it requires certification. There are permitted and unpermitted uses of lean. It's a very serious problem. Out of all of the problems that we have with you, this should be the problem that is the most important.
I only could...
Because the public now is at safety. It's not just your shenanigans that go on in here. Now you've put the public at risk.
I understand your point of view. We always had one person, from what I understand, doing that. There are a group of people that assist, but there's some things they cannot finish doing. So it takes one person that was doing that job, and she did retire.
Well, I would like some more information on exactly where you're at in the certification process, and how many people you have in line for certification.
I would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carabelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I didn't so much wanted to talk about lean, other than it's on the table right now. So, my understanding is that you have one person that's in training? Is that what you said, going to be testing?
Three. I recommended three.
Okay. You have one person that is though testing? Is that what I understood?
We're in the process of getting a certified person to give the test. I found out that I could administer the test, so I want to do that.
Is, Madam Clerk, is that one person, or is that three people that have to take the test?
The three people can take the test.
Right now, what are you waiting for? One person to take the test?
They all went to the same class. You take a class first, and then you go through the test to get certified.
Okay.
And in the process...
Wait, I want to make sure I understand. So you have three employees from the clerk's office that went and took classes?
Yes.
They completed their classes, they're waiting for you to schedule the testing, and then you'll have three people to take care of the backlog?
That's my goal, yes.
Okay. My next question is, how many people are doing it right now, the lean?
We had one person, but she retired. So we did, we do have someone who took the class, and she's working on the liens that she can do. And they're working on it.
Okay.
To do the other part...
Listen, and I'm just really trying to understand, so please bear with me.
Sure.
So technically, right now, there is no one certified in this county to input lean?
There is the supervisor who returned back to work.
So a supervisor?
Yes.
Now that's working or retired?
No. She's still, she was brought back to work. The person that was doing it...
Okay, so she's brought back to work?
Is retired. I had a training session six months ago with the supervisor to train the person to fulfill the person that was retiring her job. It wasn't successfully completed during that six-months training period with how it was running in the office, and I didn't monitor that.
So right now, my understanding is you have one person that's full-time doing this work, correct?
That is going to be...
And that just came back today, and how long was it not being done?
I didn't research that. I only could say, I didn't know there was that backlog, because the person who was there didn't say the number. That's a big number. It's not just a number that happens in two weeks.
When did that person retire?
I don't recall it right now.
Last month? Two months ago? Three? I'm just, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I just don't know the answer.
Fair enough. Okay. And there's only one, when you came out, there was only one person that knew how to do that job?
Yes.
Okay. How long is this...
Besides, I believe the supervisor. They both would...
So two people. How many people, I'm sorry, how many, how long is this training that these three individuals went to?
I'm just recalling real quickly, they went... I'm just recalling real quickly. They went, they had it scheduled for last week and they completed a day training.
So it's a one-day training process?
On that process, no. There's another process for the test. For the test. It's called the open book test.
Okay. So my understanding is that it's a one-day training process, training in the classroom?
In general, yes.
And then after that, it's a, somebody comes in and do an administrator of the test?
That's usually the process, yes.
Okay. Being that there's this big of a backlog, is there any way you can get with H R to see if you can have additional people go to this class so that, number one, we can actually input what needs to be done and then have these people working overtime to try to get us caught up?
That is excellent.
No.
Yes.
Can you reach out to H R?
Yes.
And have them assist you in this process?
Yes.
Okay. And can you also let us know what day you schedule this testing so we have an idea of when we're going to have these people working on this?
Okay. Okay.
I have more questions, but I guess I'll let you continue on if you want, or you want me?
If, if, let's go through the list. If they're not contained in there, then you can, we'll have time at the end. Commissioner Leonetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kleinfeld.
Oh, that's okay. No, I yield to Commissioner Kleinfeld.
There you go.
You better. No, I'm just kidding. You had asked two questions, so I was going to ask a question on the first one, which was regard to the hiring of attorney through line items, if you don't mind, and then I'll quickly ask on the lean. The response that you gave with respect to hiring attorneys and using line items to do so, on page three of your response, you quote, you gave section nine fund transfers, countywide elected officials can transfer from one line item to another thirty-five-thousand or five percent, whichever is less. And then on page four, you said the, and that one was per, I guess, the charter and then this one was per F Y two thousand and seventeen ordinance that you could transfer a hundred thousand or ten percent, whichever is less. So the first question that's outstanding is whether or not you can do that, and I'll get to that in just a second, but if you, if you are going to do that, is your, is it your intent? Is it your belief that you are allowed to transfer a hundred thousand dollars from one line item to another to put it into that line item for attorneys? Or is it thirty-five? What is your belief?
That's a tough question because I would be practical about it. I would sit down with my attorney and look at the case and figure out a cost and figure out what he gets per hour.
Okay.
And you made it very clear, the chairperson gave a formula that I need to break down a cost. And I'm just saying at this question, it depends on those principles of cost. And if my budget is what it is and there is no line item, as you go through the process, you look at how other departments did their line items and where they got their funds from. So you can go to the check registrar and follow some of the way we do our financing.
Well, first of all, I have a series of questions and I know everybody else does. So when, when it's a, when it's a question that requires a specific answer, I just want to get right to that answer because I don't want to be here like all night. The specific question was not with respect to us allotting you money for an attorney. That's a different issue. In your answer, you were indicating that you have the authority to move money from one line item to another, to move it into that. We may not, we don't disagree, we don't agree with that, and I'll get to that in a minute, but I'm not asking you about any specific case or any circumstance. I'm asking you, how much money do you believe that you have the authority to move into that line item? I'm not asking you how much you want to or how much you plan on or what case or, how much do you believe you have the authority to move into that line item from other line items?
To be fair, if I get an attorney, I can consult an attorney because this is sort of like a real difficult question.
No, it's a number and it's not about a specific case. It's just how.
If I don't have a need for thirty-five thousand, I wouldn't ask for thirty-five thousand.
I'm not asking how much you would ask for. I'm really trying to get into what you think you have the authority to do because you're indicating in here that you don't have to come to us, that you've got the authority to move from other line items and, and there's conflicting things in here, and I'm trying to get to what you believe you have the authority. I'm not asking you what you're going to do. I'm asking you what you believe you have the authority without us to move into that line item.
I don't have a belief figure to say.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you giving me that, you know, just if you don't have a specific number, I'm okay with you saying I don't know. I really am. So then with respect to the belief that you have the authority to do that, in, in the case, some of the cases that where there's been a denial, you've been afforded corp counsel and you've been afforded their opinion. And, and so that is providing you with an attorney. You've not accepted that opinion, but if we're provided an attorney and they have given you an opinion, then haven't we satisfied that in those situations? Whether you agree with the opinion or not, we've, we've provided an attorney that has read the contracts and all of those things and given you an opinion like on the grievances?
I have not received any assistance from legal counsel on the grievances. The process does not include attorneys.
I thought that you received opinions both from H R and from corp counsel on several issues even long before grievances were filed.
No, the issue was my statutory interpretation of my rights under the Constitution.
Okay, I'm glad you brought that up because this is the second time you've said it. And you said it a lot the last time you were in front of us. Are you speaking to the federal constitution or the state constitution?
Well, we have both constitutions.
Okay, so what?
Govern my offices.
So would you tell me what section of the federal constitution you're referring to when I ask you a specific question about something and you refer to your constitutional rights and, because, because none of us know what that means? So if you could give us specifically the part of the Constitution of the United States that you are calling upon when you're telling us about your constitutional rights specifically with regard to this question, which is, we, counsel was provided to you. And they gave you their advice on what the contract said and what you could do and what you could not do. So what section of the United States Constitution or the Michigan State Constitution are you referring to when you're invoking that in this question?
I said earlier and I referred to the deputy's positions. And that is in a legal court case, so I don't want to get into that argument. I will continue to say that as a constitutional officer and part of the judiciary branch, I have many positions of obligations to not only the court, but to the public. I am the keeper of the records from the state of Michigan.
Okay, so when you're referring to the Constitution, you're referring to the Constitution just vaguely and generally. And, and so for you, that means it applies to whatever you're applying it to.
No.
So I want to get back because other people have questions, so I really want to get back to the question at hand. And that is, because I'm concerned about you moving money into that line item over issues that you've been provided counsel. So when you've been provided counsel, and, and these are people that have spent years reading these contracts and reading the policies, and they're giving you sound advice on what you can and can't do, and you choose to disregard that, then why, why should we provide you or why should you have the right to move money into that line item if you've already been afforded attorneys giving you advice throughout the process?
It's a disagreement we have and under the charter, I have a right and a position to question an opinion.
Okay, and I just with respect to that, I would agree with you if it's one disagreement, but you've, you've disagreed with everybody over everything and in every single one of those disagreements, you want an attorney and you want to spend money on an attorney. And, and I just wanted, just generally speaking, did it ever occur to you that if you disagree with everybody who's been trained in the county and knows what they're doing and has known for years, if you disagree with everybody on everything and you want to hire counsel to fight everybody, is it possible that they're not the ones that are wrong?
It is an opinion. It's your opinion and I have an opinion and that's what makes arguments possible.
Okay, so the, the second thing that you brought about was with regard to the lean. The second question was with regard to the lean. So you indicated in here with regard to the lean that you, see page five, that you wanted to hire part-time workers to address the backlog and that H R denied that. Is that a union contractual issue?
In my opinion, everybody works together as we can. We sit down and discuss the needs of my offices and the vacancies that I have. And the way the process works in hiring employee is not the fastest process to go through. And I just am working with H R to fill already vacancies and moving people up to hire new people, and this is a process we're doing right now. The idea you brought forth today to add additional part-time help for a deficiency in the leans will work. That's, that's for a specific need. That's where the design of me having counter deputies come into play. They're more at will to do a task that's not outside the scope of a unit employee.
Okay, so, so you want additional part-time employees for positions that you haven't even put the full-time employees into yet?
For the need of that need right now, it would have to work that quickly, yes. It is a need that you just can't go into the process of hiring a position and creating a position.
Have you, because I know from day one, because of that first letter you sent out before you ever took office about you were going to get rid of a number of employees. I know from day one that you were told there were contract issues with the things you wanted to do, so I'm just curious, have you read and studied the union contracts that apply to your department?
I have read the contract. We sit down with the, the process of the grievances.
No, I'm just mean.
I'm just explaining how I understand.
I just want to know if you've actually sat down and read these contracts.
Yes, I have.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to yield, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Leonetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to focus back a little bit on the leans and then I'm going to ask you some pretty simple questions. You acknowledge that we're forty-four-hundred lean entries behind. Is that true, Ms. Springer?
Yes.
Okay. And you acknowledge that that's a serious danger to the public, to the, to the nature of how our society works if lean entries aren't up to date. You agree with that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. You also were elected by the people. Is that correct?
That's correct.
You won an election. Now, in some of your answers, you always talk about a constitutional right or a statutory right you have, and you've even filed a lawsuit against the county to invoke this statutory or constitutional right to decide, I guess, how to hire people. Do you think the people voted you in to bring lawsuits to find out about what might be your constitutional right or your statutory right? Or do you think the people voted you in to make sure the lean entries are up to date? What's more important? You tell me.
Well, of course, lean.
Okay. You agree that the lean entries are important?
You're right.
So then let's talk about that because this isn't about a Democrat or Republican thing. This isn't about a union or, or management thing. This isn't about one branch of government trying to overpower another branch of government. It's about doing the job you were elected by the people to do. And you've acknowledged now that you're not fulfilling that obligation. Isn't that correct?
I abstained from answering that question.
It's a simple question. If you're forty-four-hundred lean entries behind.
We are that behind. I stated the reason. I was honest about finding that number and I explained that there was only one person with the supervisor and possibly other workers who were doing that. But between the e-filing, working on the counter, multitasking in the jobs that the staff do, understanding the full operations is necessary to know where there needs to be more people to do the task totally and completely finished, not partway, not fifteen minutes on the job, twenty minutes or an hour. If it takes four hours to do this work, then it's calculated as four hours. And I had overtime just to deal with the e-filing, log, the backlogs on that issue. And this is another issue that's critical.
There's no doubt it's critical, but let me ask you this, and it relates to the whole idea of these arguments about who you can hire and who you can't hire. Your department is down on people, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Human resources and you could work together to fill those positions, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Why haven't you been able to fill the positions? The easiest way to solve the lean problem is to hire more people. You have it in your budget to hire at least seven to eleven more people to fill these positions, and yet you haven't done that. Is that because you're interested in your lawsuit and your constitutional and statutory right? Or are you interested in getting the lean entries up to date? Which one is it?
It's hiring people, getting the lean system up to its capability of like zero, but it always will be there because of the continuous process of cases coming in.
Then why haven't you gone to human resources and worked with the number of applicants they've had given you and hire them to get the job done? Why haven't you done that?
I have. And what happened is during the process, there is a way to use the computer called NeoGov, and it is a process that's not like the old-fashioned way. You fill out application, you come in, you sit down, you go through the interview and you know within less than three days or a week. The process that we use today is not that quick. The hiring manager and the way they designed that program, it takes three people to process the, the information.
Let me ask you something. Do you have to, let me ask you something.
Commissioner, Commissioner Leonetti, can I just intervene for a second? We know that there's a problem between H R and the, and the clerk's office. And we know that H R has been trying to accomplish this hiring that we're talking about that's needed to fulfill this, and we know that there's been issues between them for about, oh, I don't know, eight months now. So I, I know that you're driving to the point that we should be hiring these people. They should have been hired a long time ago. This is not a process that takes long. We've all hired many people in our departments very quickly when jobs are vacant and jobs are necessary to be performed. And this is another problem with, with the clerk's office that is not a problem anywhere else. So I don't want to keep driving on the same.
I won't, I won't drive on the same subject because I have two more questions. The next question is with.
Can I just say a statement?
Let me ask a question. Let me ask the question. The question is, with the people that you have and you're understaffed, do you have any idea how much overtime it's going to cost in order to get us these forty-four-hundred lean entries up to some reasonable number? Any idea what the overtime budget's going to be?
To be honest, no.
That's a fair answer. My other question is, it's simply this. I know, and I made this a point of information, Lisa Emerson, who's the supervisor, is that the supervisor who's in charge of lean entry?
She is.
Okay. She's here, present. Is there any way we can bring her up or you prefer not to? Okay, all right. I have no further questions. I have no further questions.
Okay. There are a few other people on here. I don't want to keep going on on the same topic. We understand we're 4,400 lien entries behind. We understand, now we've made it perfectly clear how dangerous it is to the public. So although everybody has the right to speak, I don't want to keep speaking to the same topic over and over. I think we're very clear that this is as important of an issue as we have going on in this county right now, along with a few others that we haven't even tapped into yet. So I have Commissioner Sager, then Commissioner Lucido, then we're going to get into the next backlog, and that's e-filing, which is in a very similar situation than this, and we're going to be talking a little bit about that. But Commissioner Sager.
Ms. Springer, do you know, did you know anything about the lien machine before you got elected?
No.
And what happened to the people that were running it while you were there yet? When you took office, what happened to those people?
I said one person did retire, and the supervisor, who is the chief supervisor for the court, Lisa Emerson.
Okay, you're speaking of one person, one person. I worked there 26 years, and I know there are a couple other deputies in the audience. We were never that far behind on lien machine. We had people up to date who were taking care of it, and it's such a serious operation that it's a criminal act if you get screwed up on a thing. And I'm just wondering, if you didn't know nothing about it, why didn't you keep the people that were there or lay in there and say, hey, help me out? I never heard that. And I haven't heard a thing in 11 months you've been there that you've accomplished with that lien machine.
I did ask to bring back the person that retired part-time.
That seems to be your answer so many times. I did ask, I asked. Something's wrong.
I asked.
Something's wrong when you keep saying you ask, you never get. We ask, we talk about it, we get. So I'm not going to prolong this thing, but I don't think you've got anybody up there that knows anything about that lien machine, and it's such a criminal act to get involved with the wrong side of it, that I don't know who you've got running it. And who does the interviewing to run the lien machine? Quit writing and just listen and give me an answer. Who does the people that you have interviewing for people to get qualified for the lien machine, who are they? From your staff?
From the staff in the clerk's office, correct.
And what, how qualified are they?
They went to the class, and they're going to get certified.
I'm done.
Thank you. Commissioner Lucido.
I have just one question. Obviously, the number 4,400 seems like a lot.
It is a lot.
But do you know the answer? Are we aware of what other counties around us, what their backlog is?
No, I have not. No, I have not.
Okay, I think that might be something to look into, because, I mean, I'm unaware of that answer, but I think that if you had something to compare it to, you would know where your goal should be.
Well, this is a goal to take care of immediately.
Right, but specifically, like, you don't ever want to be so far behind. How far behind? I mean, you said that there's always been a backlog. What is an appropriate number?
As you look at how the process works and who's been doing it, and the different tasks that they were taken away from to keep doing that particular task, you have to balance that decision, and usually that is done within the supervision and the people that are working in that department, because I might not be there to oversee it. But now that, I will be overseeing it to have this addressed.
I just think that might be interesting for you to look into, just to see maybe Oakland-Wayne, where they're at with their system.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, I believe that the standard is no more than one day behind, and I know that we are months behind at this point. Commissioner Majek.
Do you know what the backlog was at the beginning of the year, January?
I do not. I do not take inventory on that.
And how many people are entering it into the system right now?
The three people that were going to the class started to get into the...
I don't want to know about people going and taking tests. I want to know right now...
Well, you have to take the class in order to do that job.
Right, so they're not...
Commissioner Majek, she's stated there's one person right now that's...
And that's Lisa Emerson.
...to put in right now, and that's the supervisor that's...
Okay, and then how many, how many can one person do per hour or per day if there's 4,400?
I don't have that answer. I would have, I would have to consult...
Shouldn't you consult with her?
Yes.
Shouldn't it be wise to consult with someone who's an expert in this field to help give you guidance and hire the necessary people to get this done? This is very, this is very serious. There's a lot of things going on in your office, but again, you're putting the public at risk. This is crucial here and unacceptable. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next question is, has to do with e-filing, which is similar to what we're talking about with the liens. And I'd like to tee up Commissioner Leonetti, who is one of our resident attorneys, just to give a quick explanation to those commissioners and those in the audience that aren't, that might have an idea of what e-filing consists of but aren't 100% sure on it. Will you give us just a quick rendition of what e-filing is, and then I'll get back to the question?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Chair. E-filing program is related to several types of cases here in Macomb County, and it's statewide as well. Any civil cases, automobile accident cases, contract dispute cases, those would have to all be entered into the e-filing system. Divorce cases, ones without children, are also entered into the e-filing system. And it's really an area where soon, we're going to probably have almost every type of case be entered into the e-filing system. Now, the way it works is if you file a particular order, let's say in a divorce case, like an injunctive order, to stop another party from removing assets from the bank or from, say, like, the home, you have to enter that order into the e-filing system. And you indicate it's a proposed order that you want the judge to enter. Now, hopefully, you get that order entered pretty quick, because if your opponents are trying to take money out of a bank account, you don't have that order in your hand quick enough, you're going to have an empty bank account. The way it works, say, in Oakland County, which is up to snuff, is I file that order, and within 12 minutes, I can tell you, I get an order back. There's no problems. When I file a document at Oakland County, within 12 minutes, I get a response back that it's not only been received, but it's been entered into the system. I can testify a little bit to my personal experience as an attorney here in Macomb County when I file Macomb County cases in e-filing, if you'd like me to.
Sure, just briefly. I know right now we are, as of the report, a month behind.
Yeah. What happens is when I file a case now, it does indicate that it's been filed, but it doesn't indicate that it's been received by the court. Certainly, as an attorney and representing clients, you want to be able to tell clients, look, I filed your thing, and it's been received by the court. You can rest in peace, sort of, in terms of your legal case. The problem we have here is unlike Oakland County, like I said, if I file something in Oakland County, not only do I get an indication that it's been received almost within 12 minutes, but oftentimes, in the case of an order, within a half hour, I'll have a note that it's been entered. In Macomb County, I file things, it indicates it's been filed. It's been weeks before I've noted that it's been entered into the system. And that can cause a problem, for the most simple divorce case to, you can imagine, some complex civil litigation cases. And the judges are starting to feel it up there, the attorneys are starting to feel it, and it's a problem. Now, I understand it's a relatively new system, and I do agree with Clerk Springer that it's 24 hours. So there's attorneys filing things at 11 o'clock at night or over the weekends and stuff. And so she's got to keep on top of that. It's not like the usual routine where they come in in the past where it was nine to five. Now you've got things coming in, you know, in the evening and over the weekends. But the system was in place last year, and it was never this far behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Just real, really quick to that.
We're going to go on to the question line here.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, to the chair, to the counselor.
Just to explain the e-filing a little better?
Does that also pertain to personal protection orders?
Personal protection orders are still, I believe, done through the customary way where you go to the court and actually enter it that way.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the latitude.
Thank you. And Commissioner Tocco to add to that.
Just real two quick comments to Commissioner Leonetti. If the case is an e-file case, you are not allowed to walk downstairs or upstairs and file it at the counter. You are stuck having to use the e-file system. The second thing is, is that the county charges additional money with each case and each e-filing to make sure that the e-filing is done and done timely. So you're charged a fee in addition to the counter fee.
Thank you. So Clerk Springer, this, these questions, and I'm not going to ask all the questions I have, this is almost exactly the same problem that we're having with the lien. One of the main things that this is affecting is the court was supposed to be transitioning to a new e-filing system beginning yesterday, and they weren't able to do that. And I'm just wondering if you know if that's because of the severe backlog that you have in e-filing cases right now?
It's probably a combination, because the software and the outage problem on changing the computer system that they use was upgraded. It caused a slowdown in the system processing. So you can't get the data into the system as it was designed before, and this was one of the biggest complaints. All the clerks wrote emails, and they all addressed them. My problem is, I feel I should use maybe my technology fund and use that money to invest in a better software program that just sustains my office to put the data in quickly, have it available, so that that system that they have works with my system. And then either system goes down in one instance where the computers fail, we will have a backup, where it would be designed to where it could hold the capacity that we're going to. E-filing is going to be the new way of technology. The paper way is not going to be here. So the e-filing system is up on the sixth floor, where you can go up there and you process it. I don't own the software. I don't have the capacity to have decision-making in it. I only supply the workers and what we can do with the system we have. It's an old-fashioned system in my mind. It's not as quick as the newer computer systems are and the newer programs that are available. That's where I think the good reporting would be done, is to see how the other counties design it. We're talking about Oakland County, who has the 24-hour turnabout. So these are things that I'm looking into for a long-term fix.
Excuse me. Clerk, have you been working with the IT and the court's IT regarding any of these problems? Are these things that you're coming up with, with your people, that are ideas that should happen? Are these coming from our IT department, which we have a massive IT department, and the court's IT department? Have you been working with them on this process?
Yes, we have. And we've been documenting the problems. All the clerks have been taking snapshots of what is happening on their computer, why it seemed to be, so many more new bundles were coming in, but it wasn't the bundles that belonged to our section. So it only could hold maybe max to 2,000 in the capacity, not to 3,000 or 4,000 as a capacity.
Okay, Clerk Springer, you mentioned something about that e-filing is the wave of the future, and we're not, you know, paper's going away, and we're going to electronics. But I remember not that long ago, you took away everybody's iPads, and they were writing receipts in carbon copy paper. Is that going the right direction or wrong direction now, or where are we at with that?
The analogy of that was, the cashiering is doing that function. So if you're doing the function whilst you're waiting on the customer, the cashier doesn't have anything else to do but take in the cash. Her job was to do that function. So as you take that time slot away and delegate it more efficiently and effectively, and how to make things work not faster but more complete, more effective to where you get it done in a timely manner, that's what I'm assessing. And we have a lot of veterans in this department that comes up some really good ideas to work towards working with the court and working with IT.
Clerk Springer, I'm back to the iPads. Are they back with everybody, or are we still writing things by hand?
The cash flow on the iPads, the chip was missing when they moved me into the new building. It didn't have the chip to record the cash.
Okay, that's my question.
Just the credit card transactions.
So I'm going to ask two questions regarding the e-filing. How much of the e-filing backlog has to do with what you've already explained, and you don't have to explain it again, your problem, perceived problem or problem with the system, the software, and how much of it has to do with the fact that there's such a high rate of vacancy in your department?
The vacancies are related to, when I came into office...
I'm not asking what they're related to, but how much does, how much do the vacancies affect the e-filing backlog? Is it a vacancy problem, or is it a software problem, or is it both?
It's a combination. It's a combination, because you have to be trained from a four-month period to get up to e-filing.
Okay, we're going to get back to the training again. Do we have people in training for this, that we can increase this? And how many people are in training right now? And how many people are able to do it right now?
Once we go through the NeoGov to get the people moved up, and the applicants come in, and let's say there's 200 applicants, and I get 12 out of the 200, we get the interview process going, and then we start hiring them and training them. So these people are doing e-filing already, because they have computer skills, some of them worked in attorney's offices, some of them are familiar with e-filing already. So those are the type of candidates I look for, for a long-term purpose when I do interviews to hire.
Okay, so this has been going on for quite some time. I remember talking to you about this months and months and months ago, but now we're hiring for this. I don't understand why only now we don't have people in place and in training already.
This is what, this is what happened. The candidates' applications came in for registered deeds. They were perfect candidates for the clerk's office. They had all the criteria I just spoke about. We couldn't get their applicants to transfer over to the clerk's office. I don't know why, but it just didn't happen. One out of the 12 did both applications, so I hired her immediately, because I knew she had the skills that I needed to fulfill and move her up to e-filing because of the computer abilities and her background in working in the attorney's office. So I couldn't transfer the right candidates to my right department, because data entry is strictly for registered deeds. So I got those applicants for the clerk's office. So I had a real issue on how to maneuver this thinking process that happens on occasions, that I lost most of those candidates because the timeframe moved forward. Those are the things that I really feel is an issue that I'm still trying to be creative on how to do it quicker, more efficiently, and get the people in there. I brought in temps on my own accord to HR LR and brought them in immediately. So I am very creative on doing some of the things successfully to move forward on a stumbling block that is dependent on a system that is not workable in a timely manner, to get applicants quickly, efficiently, and to hire them.
Okay, Clerk, I would like to ask you when you're going to have the e-filing caught up, but I'm afraid that we'll probably be here for another 45 minutes trying to figure that out. So I know that's part of a lawsuit also that's going on with the court and with, so I guess we'll let, I'm thinking I should let them deal with that in court on getting you up to date on these. So unless you have a date for me that you believe that you're going to be caught up, and that's all I would like to hear, is a date? If you don't have a date, that's fine. I don't want to hear why we don't have a date.
I will, I do not have a date, but I would be happy to give you a date as soon as I can commit to it, because it depends on the numbers of how I can get...
I understand it depends on a lot of different things.
Get the consistency of them doing the e-filing every day.
Commissioner Brown, I believe you are up to speak on this issue.
Thank you. And I want to thank Commissioner Leonetti for explaining the e-filing and how it affects real people on a day-to-day basis. I mean, that could be really emotional, people trying to file documents to try to prevent things that they're already in emotionally charged situation, that could lead to more problems, perhaps physical problems. And that's dangerous. Would you agree?
Absolutely, Commissioner Brown. It's, you know, the things that the clerk does in her function affect most people that come to government. Most people want to have nothing to do with government, but they do have to come often to the clerk's office for things like marriage license... to the clerk's office for things like marriage licenses, birth certificates, and unfortunately in the cases of divorce. And these are everyday things that affect everyday people. And what's so frustrating is, we're behind. And you were elected, you were elected by the, she was elected by the people to keep the train moving. And all we have are games and jacking, and it's affecting everyday people. Thank you, Commissioner Brown.
I appreciate that. My brother's a police officer in Oakland County. In fact, his friend, his friend who joined the force just was buried the other day in Oakland County, because he got run over by a criminal out of Macomb County. Now, maybe that lean system, you know, having that lean system backed up so far puts police officers' lives at risk, to deal with them every day. This thing with the court, the e-filing, dealing with people that are already emotionally charged, having them, having their issues postponed and delayed, having things happen in their lives that they thought the legal system was going to take care of for them, is letting them down. Your incompetence of running that department and letting these backlogs continue and build is dangerous to the whole county. Do you realize that?
Yes.
And I don't sense the urgency, what, I don't sense the urgency. You...
Commissioner, that's why there's plenty lawsuits going on, because everybody else realizes the urgency of this. And unfortunately, there is a process. Well, fortunately...
Your incompetence is dangerous.
I understand your opinion. I think it's a lot of people's opinion, but the problem is, we aren't going to solve it at this, this way.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kleinfeld.
Thank you. Just very briefly, you don't have the deputy for the clerk's, the court section of your department, right? The clerk section, you have the registered deeds deputy.
Correct.
So, if you were to get that position filled, they probably could aid you in, first of all, instead of trying to get applications for different positions, you could actually post the positions that you need. People actually, they come and they apply, and then you get the field from them. And if you fill that position, you would be helped tremendously in that, wouldn't you?
I agree.
Okay, so, is that something that you're committed to working on?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Commissioner Kleinfeld, just a little bit on that. I've talked to the chief judge several times. The chief judge is the one that approves that appointment. I know that Clerk Springer has brought several applicants to him, that he does not feel met the requirements for that position. He did give her a list of some minimum qualifications months and months ago to bring people to him, and I know that there's been nobody that has been brought to his attention that have come close to meeting these minimum requirements that he put on this. So, it is not a, it's not a roadblock. It is simple, simply a minimum requirement that the chief judge believes should be that held of that position.
Has that position been posted on our website, on the county website, so that it might actually reach people that have those sorts of qualifications?
I have a candidate already, and I'm waiting for the judge's approval.
Yes, but if you're having a problem getting people that are qualified, and you're just, and you're recognizing you're new to this job, and you don't know a lot about the job you're learning. So, if you're just plucking people out of your circle of people that you know, and you're not putting it on the website with specific criteria that HR could help you with to attract the candidates that could actually do the job, you're bound to have the same failure with the chief judge that you had over and over and over again. So, what do you think about posting that on our website and allowing specific people with those criteria to apply for the position?
This issue is in the lawsuit, so I, I'm not going to answer that question.
Okay. One more with, and I'll let you, with regard to the shortages, and I don't know if they're, if they're just general shortages of employees or e-filing or whatever, so I wasn't sure where to ask this, but you have in your answer on page 11, under, this is under clerk's office document filing. It's not e-filing, but I think it applies what you're going to do to lower wait times. And you said, under information and belief, "As of November 27, 2017, the filling of vacant staff positions for qualified staff will be noticed to the public." So, as of November 27th, the positions will be noticed to the public. So, does that mean all this time, I mean, we've had you up here, the employees are saying, "We need help, we're understaffed," HR is saying, "We'll help you." Are you, is that, are you indicating that you actually, all this time, you haven't been posting these positions?
It goes through the process. HR LR, we work together. The question was, if those average wait times are longer, why are they longer, and what, if anything, you're doing to shorten the wait time?
Yes.
So, November 27th, I sat down and gave a lot of thought to this question. And I mentioned that I think if I put this out to the public, publish it in a newspaper and get some applications, do a little interviewing, and present their applicant to HR LR. Right now, the system is within the county. The system works within the applicant filling out the application. The way it happened when I first came in, the application was given to me, you filled it out, and it happened with the rest of the staff or the deputies. Now you go in, it's emailed to you. There was a lot of people who inquired, came back to my office and said, they still didn't get the application emailed to them from HR LR.
Okay.
So, I'm just saying...
You've got, you do, you're talking a lot about a process.
Yes.
But see, I guess, I guess the way that the rest of us think is, we have a vacancy and we need to fill it. We contact our HR and we say, and we say, "I have this vacancy, this position. It's got a list of criteria. Would you post it on the website, get applications?" They screen the applications to let you know who's qualified. So, you're talking about posting it in the newspaper. It sounds like you don't want to follow the process for the way that we hire employees. Would you agree with that? Is that what, is that...
No, I don't. I've been doing that process, and I haven't gotten my vacancies fulfilled. Some of the applicants, in the beginning, were filled. During the turnover and the retirement in the registered deeds section, in the retirement in the clerk's office, it's called a turnover. Sometimes we know ahead of time, a month or two, but you can't post a position until that person retires.
But you're not down one position or two positions? Well, I know, but, but see, everybody else wants to speak, and if you explain for my question for a half an hour, they won't get mad at you, they'll get mad at me. So, I want to make sure that doesn't happen. So, you just sort of vaguely talk about a process, and I haven't been able to get my mind about what you, what's in your mind with regard to a process. But I think you may actually have to go through some sort of training on what the process actually is. And...
I have staff that process into NeoGov, and it's a three-way process. It's not a one-job process.
But, okay, just back to, see, we, see, you're really good at getting me in the weeds.
No, I'm just trying to explain how it works.
But my original question was with respect to your statement, that as of November 27th, "The filling of vacant staff positions for qualified staff will be noticed to the public." So, that's, what's today's date? That's like, like, so, three days ago? So, all this time, with all of the union grievances, the screaming, HR, the county executive saying, "You've got to get this stuff done," us, all this time, none of that's occurred? So, so you said, "As of November 27th." So, as of November 27th, are all those vacant positions now posted on our website?
I would double-check. I would say some of them are, that I know of. The ones that I don't know of is because when you put it into the system, we use the word, it pings, and it goes through the process of three departments for approval. And when I called finance to say there was a problem with an applicant...
Clerk, is it safe to say you don't know? Is that the answer?
No.
You don't know? You don't know if they're all posted at this moment?
I believe they should be in what I need, yes.
Okay.
What I've been doing to fill them, to answer the question about...
That's not what she asked. She asked if they are filled, if they are posted at this moment, and that's the question. Are they posted? Do you know? Do you not know? If you don't know, it's okay.
They're posted, and I believe there's candidates to actually bring in.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. And I just, I just haven't had any other department head say, "This long, laborious process, nobody else has had the problem." And if nobody else is having the issue, and I said this earlier, it's possible that it's not HR and it's not us. It's possible you might want to reflect inward and ask if it's you. Thank you.
Commissioner Leonetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real short, with regard to the backlog of e-filing, are we, is your department having to rely on overtime to catch up on the backlog of e-filing?
It's, it's what we had to do for the emergency of the number, because of the move that I had in the court section.
Clerk, is it yes or no?
Yes.
Yeah, so you're using overtime. Any idea on what amount of overtime you may have to utilize to get caught up to, on the e-filing?
I don't want to guess.
Okay, no, that's fair. If you don't know, you don't know.
I, if I guess, and it's not accurate in my mind, it's hard to guess.
I would prefer you tell me you just don't know. But you do agree that there's overtime that's going to be needed in order to...
Yes, and I have been doing that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Carabelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Clerk, do you see any frustration in the room today?
In what way?
Any board members?
I know the questioning has...
Do you see any frustration in any board members today?
I hear in the questions, and I see an expression which would be frustration, yes.
Okay. Do you know why they're frustrated? Well, let me answer that question. I'll tell you why they're frustrated. Because we care. We care. We got elected to do a job to represent our residents. We want to make sure that they are getting what their tax dollars are paying for. We want to make sure people are safe. We want to make sure records are available. We turn around and we do the daily business of the county for the people. And I mentioned this to you before. You may not like some of the processes, and you have that right not to like them. But at the end of the day, there's rules that got to be followed. And you can attempt to change them after you follow them, but not in midstream where you don't get anything done. And I sit back and I listen to all the questions right now. And I hear, hear the answers you're giving, is that you're frustrated personally on the process. And I respect that. You can't change the process by not doing anything. People are going to be hurt because of nothing getting done. Before you took an oath to take your job, I told you one of the most important positions that you needed to fill was what?
The admin coordinator.
That does the budgets, correct?
That's correct.
Did you fill it?
No, I have not.
That was December, almost a year ago today. Okay? I'm sorry. We all want to help you. We want to make sure our residents are getting what they're paying for. But you're not helping yourself. You went to a training for clerks, Michigan Association of County Clerks, did you not?
Yes, I did.
You understand that you pay a membership for that?
Yes.
Yeah. How many times, after your initial training, have you reached out for help?
With the association?
Yes.
When I go to the meetings, we talk...
No, ma'am. How many times have you reached out with the problems that are occurring here in Macomb County? Have you reached out to the association that you're paying a fund for, to belong to? They're supposed to give you resources to do your job and assist you. How many times have you personally reached out to assist you in the problems you're having?
I do it when we have conversations, and I go to my meetings. The solutions sometimes, as the clerk of the county...
Do you know they have a little representation for you at your organization?
Yes, I do.
Have you reached out to their attorney?
I have not asked their attorney.
Okay. The next question I have for you, have you reached out to any of our sister counties that border us for assistance in helping you achieve the duties of your job?
We've talked, and I have...
Have you asked them for assistance?
Not in the way of assistance, no.
Okay. I heard you answer, a commissioner to my left, a commissioner across, and the board chair on hiring. I had HR up here and you up here the last time. You told me you thought that you had maybe nine positions not filled. I think HR told me it was 18, 15 that were not filled, or 15. Do you know how many employees in the 27 adopted budget you have?
Eighty-five.
In the clerk's office? Not so, in the clerk's office?
I didn't bring my figures to break it.
Sixty. Sixty. You now, in this report, say that you're 13 employees short. So, in all, if I'm correct, 13 employees are stated in here that you're short.
I think the correction would be 10, but 13 is a...
These are your numbers, not mine.
I know, I know. I added it up, 13.
Is it 10 or 13?
See, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, it'd be 10.
Pardon?
It'd be 10. It was an error on my part.
No problem. So, this should be saying 10...
The total was 12, and I counted, it's 10.
I'm sorry.
But I would have to say when this...
Say that one more time, the total's what?
The total that's written on the report on page 14 was 12. And one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and three is 10.
Well, on the report that...
The chief...
On the report that you gave us? When did we receive this?
Yes, on the...
Mr. Chair?
Page 14.
When did we receive this? From the clerk's office?
I was referring to this one.
DeSafren, well, I'm just saying, and here you say that you have 13. And again, I believe it's like 15-plus that you're short.
Well, I would agree with 15-plus.
Okay. Here nor there, the point is, is that you're not sure how many employees you're short, 10, 12, or 13. HR says it's a different number. So, again, I advised you before you took office to fill that one position to assist you in your budget, right?
Yes.
In that conversation?
Yes.
Okay. I'm now, again, asking you to reach out to Michigan, Michigan Association of County Clerks, your sister county clerks that surround you, to assist you. We're here to help you any way you need, within reason. I don't want to convolute this anymore, from one commissioner right now, looking and talking to you, Madam Clerk. If you can look at me for a minute?
Yes.
We need you to win. You need to help yourself. You need to follow the rules that are here. And if you want to change them after the fact, all power to you. But in the meantime, our residents are suffering. Employees in here are disgruntled. We have litigation all over the place. We have grievances. We need to stop this, and we need to do the work of the people. This is coming from me.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Clerk, I have a couple more questions for you. They are, one of them's regarding the text messaging system that was in place to, for those jurors that are called to jury duty. So, there's a program that was put in place that was proven to increase the amount of jurors that were asked to come to court by over 20% in its initial phase, and I know it got better as things moved forward. That text messaging process that they, that they came up with in the prior administration, increased efficiencies, helped the jury pool reflect a little more accurately as a jury of your peer. helped the jury pool reflect a little more, um, accurately, uh, as a jury of your peers. I, I have a question for you. Did you consult with anyone before you just canceled this program?
It's still in effect. Um, the other counties that was brought up to compare and see what they're doing, we are the only county that offers this service.
So you're saying the jury text messaging is still in effect? And it's still being utilized?
It, it's going to be coming up for renewal. And, um, the decision I have to make under the budget in the process of the cost that they want to increase, I would have to make a decision on that.
Since that's coming up for renewal, have you talked to anyone about that process? And have you talked to anyone about, um, the efficiencies of it versus the cost?
Because this is part of the court and the jury commission itself. I am just a part of, I, not the, the design of that commission to make decisions, but I'm a part of it. So it would be between the commission who serves it to sit down and reevaluate what that service could be sustainable with the budget I have and the cost that's going to be increased on it. So I will be doing that.
Okay. There's, there's a lot of problems and not a lot of answers at this point. So let me ask you this. Just out of curiosity, would you be opposed to having all the jury-related functions that are assigned to you, actually assigned to the court and have the budgetary, um, and staff reassigned, the budgetary money, and the staff reassigned to the court? There's a lot of things you guys do for the court that it sounds like are, are falling behind and woefully inadequate. In some areas, uh, the courts actually, uh, handle some of the things that the clerk does now. Would you have an issue with, uh, transferring some of those court-related functions to the court?
I will be honest about the way balance is in our government to be structured. Um, looking to see if other counties have such agreements or, or a process that they work in that nature. I think that is a good, uh, way to resolve, um, an issue of this kind. So I would be very open to, um, reviewing and, um, looking at that as a possibility and researching it to make a good decision.
Okay, are you going to look into that? Are you going to ask someone to look into that?
Yes.
Okay, good. And we'll be happy to help you with that.
Okay.
Um, you speak, uh, in your answers about management rights. Can you tell me what legal authority supports your interpretation of management rights?
It's written really well in the union contract and I didn't memorize it. I just wish I would have been prepared for this question to really read it as well as it was written.
Well, Clerk, you talk a lot about your management rights. You've talked about the management rights basically since you came in here. And your idea of management rights, um, from the beginning seemed to, um, indicate that you thought that your rights as a manager, um, usurped the union contracts and the county's HR policies. And that's, I guess where we're getting, where I'm getting at with this is y- your idea of management rights. I want to know where your idea of management rights comes from.
I think many times when I came before the board, before I even became the officer, I talked about balance in government. I talked about the harmony that's needed and how citizens participate and how we want to be accountable and be transparent. When I decided to take this position and run for office, my whole goal and dream was, is to really be accountable to the voters of Michigan and to bring back government for the people, by the people, with the people. So accountability and transparency is all, what my dream is all about. And when there are issues already existing in the position I came into, I'm dealing with it. I'll take responsibility. I will do the best I can.
So back to the management rights.
And I will work with the commissioners.
Let's get back to the management rights question. I just, you've mentioned that a lot, like you mentioned statutory rights and your constitutional rights. I want to know if you.
No, it's the same word of working together as a team and putting the expertise of the people that already work in that department, who knows their job. They've really been there for a long time.
Okay, so you talk about harmony and unity and, and, and all of these things. So let me ask you this question.
To run.
We're not talking about.
The office of work. As a leader and as management goes, it is my responsibility, okay, to oversee the, the departments that I am a part of. Registered deeds and the clerk's office.
You've, you've spoke about your dream about harmony and all of this other, um, if, 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 and you've mentioned that the morale in your office is great, uh, in your report. So i- if you, if it's so great, can you ask me why there's been so many grievances? Uh, you know, it's, it's unprecedented, the amount of grievances, um, coming out of, out of any one department. Uh, and not only that, um, the, the shocking, uh, side of this is the grievances that have been upheld as, um, as, uh, appropriate, uh, by, by HR and, and by, so, a- again, I, 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 I hear about harmony, but I see nothing but discord. So, can you explain why there's been so many grievances? I think, uh, I've heard in the past that it's a, a conspiracy, uh, amongst HR and, um, the union and, um, um, I, I don't know who the Delden operatives are, but I read that a lot in the, um, in the, the statements. So can you explain to me, um, why your harmony has turned into such disharmony?
Well, when I came into the office, there was a lot of disharmony. I won't hide the fact. I never publicly talked about it. I never, um, made statements during that time. The issue has escalated to where if you call it a family feud, that's a good word to put it mildly, where, when you give a task to someone and they say no, that is very difficult to deal with. But you have to do what you do as the boss or as someone who has to make sure you're accountable to do a job. There's always a reason why some things don't get done. And you try to go to that person and you talk to that person and you, you, you get down to the facts of it. Because I'm not going to say I'm there twenty-four seven in registered deeds because I can't. I have a deputy that does a wonderful job. In the atmosphere of that one building is where the grievances are from. Now, as the issue gets around about not listening or doing the task that you're assigned or the supervisor and me have a difference of opinion on not reaching the goal of, simple example is opening the mail every day. Why are we behind? Why isn't processed? What is the process? Those are the things that I am observing and watching and trying to resolve in a different way than tradition. You just don't do what they're doing and not be successful. Sometimes we have to change the, the way it's done to be more effective in getting the process. So those are some of the simple things to some of the other issues that are, that is a, a way, say it's a growing pain. You have to understand.
Okay, Clerk, I, I'm sorry.
The grievance itself.
You're, you're, you're way out. I don't know where we're going with all this, but we, but, so, I guess my point is this isn't even a question anymore.
Okay.
Um, we have, uh, three new Republican elected officials, uh, Candace Miller, Larry Raca, and yourself. I don't know that there's been any grievances coming out of any of those offices. I know that there's certainly not one, one hundredth of the problems in any of those offices. They came into situations that had other bosses before that did things different ways and were able to work around the, um, problem and the problem with who opens a mail, which I know was a big problem early on. Um, so I, I, again, I'm going to go back to Commissioner Kleinfeld's point. Pretty soon, it's time to stop pointing all your fingers everywhere around and, and look in the mirror and realize that the problem is within and not outside. Everybody is not out to get you. Everybody was out trying to help. The problem is you, you, you don't want everybody's help. You want to act like you want everybody's help until they offer you some help that you don't like. And quite honestly, the help you don't like is the, the, the union rules, HR's policies, the county rules. You don't like rules. And I can understand not liking rules. I mean, we were all kids once and we didn't like rules. But there are certain situations where we have to follow the rules. And you have not followed the rules. You've not followed any rules. You've chosen to discount any rule that this county has and go your own way. And I, I, I'm not looking for a response to that. I have a couple more speakers on here and I'm sure they'll, uh, you'll be able to respond to them.
I would like to respond.
Commissioner Kleinfeld.
Okay, uh, uh, first of all, I'm wondering if anybody up here knows the answer. The, there was a question with regard to, um, employees handwriting receipts rather than providing computerized receipts. And the answer was that it's been that way for years. Um, is, does, does anybody know if that's incorrect or correct, specific to that section?
I've been practicing law in this county for more than twenty years and I've never had a handwritten receipt for any of my filings. And in, in addition to handwritten receipts, there has been periods of time that I've been asked to write down my credit card information and give it on a slip of paper so that my pleadings could be charged at some other point. So we've got confidential credit card information floating around to pay for documents.
So when she says this was a cash-related issue that's been in place in prior administrations, there seems to be a conflict. I just wanted to check on that. And the other one that you might know about is the, um, there was a question about, uh, a contract, conduit ACS election contract services. And she says that they were never used for the election department. Uh, I don't know who asked this question. I don't know if anybody knows if that's correct or not. It's on page thirteen. It says, it's, when does, when was the last payment made on the conduit ACS election contract services? And she says they're, they don't deal with the elections department.
I think that was my error in preparing the resolution.
Okay.
Um, and, um, after that, um, our staff clarified that that's vital records, not elections and.
Okay, thank you. Um, um, okay, so on, on page fourteen, um, when there was a discrepancy as to how many vacancies, you said under information belief, the number of budgeted job descriptions and job classifications are different as the supervisors that were terminated are not considered vacant by HRLR when they implemented their months-long investigation, uh, regarding their new administrative leave policy and violation of the collective bargaining agreement and county, countywide policies. Is it your position that the supervisors are terminated?
That's the position I took, correct.
Okay, is, is that, is that still your position?
It was ordered for them to come back to work. It was in the court case.
Are they all back at work?
The ones that were still, um, working for the department, one resigned, the supervisor, and the other two were brought back. And then the other, um, employees were put on administrative leave.
Okay, I, I'm worried about losing the institutional knowledge. And on the next page, um, you're asked, um, uh, are you bound by the collective bargaining agreement? And you say yes. Um, and, and then it says, what due process rights do clerk register of deeds office personnel have? And you say, they're derived by the United States Constitution and codified into federal and state employment laws. So are you not recognizing the, the rights that may be laid out in the actual union contract when you answer that way?
No, because they support one another. I believe the, um, whole union contract recognizes constitutional laws and the federal laws.
Okay, but there may be procedures within the union contract that might not be in the Constitution. You understand that, right? Okay. I'm almost done. Under, what are you doing to improve morale in the clerk register of deeds office? You respond, you respond, active pursuit of filling the necessary vacant positions with supervisors that care about employees. And, uh, uh, the next question, how many of the unfilled positions do you intend to fill? And you say, I intend to fill all the essential vacant management positions. So you keep referring to, you're gonna, you're gonna hire managers and supervisors. And I know that when you first came in there, uh, you put out a memo, and I'm just going to tell you, I think this was a big mistake. Before you ever got into the department and evaluated the people and what they do, you put out a memo that you intended to get rid of a lot of people and, and replace them with people that you deem to be deputies. So you seem to be focusing on hiring a lot of management people, um, but I'm not seeing the same focus on hiring the actual employees that would work for management. You, you do understand that you have more employees than you do managers and that's the way it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
Okay. Why, my last question is, I have made a lot of mistakes in this position and throughout my time as an elected official. I've cast votes that I regret and I'll tell you what, I don't ever forget them. Uh, I've said things to commissioners I probably shouldn't, particularly Commissioner Carabelli, and it felt good at the time. I feel a little bad about it now. So, so I, I would like you to tell me in this process with, with regard to how you would deal with employees, uh, hiring and firing, with regard to all of this, could you tell me where you've gone wrong and what you regret?
In honesty, I wish the transition back in December, November would have went better with the previous clerk.
Okay, that's something that the clerk, you're putting on her. I'm asking about you.
When we do a transition, the paperwork in the law is very clear that you do a transition. I reached out and this, I never said to the public, what happened in our conversation? Me and her together. It was personal and private. It didn't go well. Nothing went well. A no is a no. So, it's the holiday. I go on vacation. A story gets written. I get quoted and it wasn't me. So, there's the story. Now, I still have a transition of the paperwork to do in my office. And I don't like to embarrass departments as we're doing here today. And I feel very strong that it can be worked out directly with these departments. That's why I don't want.
I know, I, I was really hoping that you could think of something that maybe you shouldn't have done.
I said, I wish the transition could have done better. And if there was a transition that the board could have, I could have came to and said the transition wasn't working, how could you intercede, right? That's a reach out.
Is it possible that on Christmas Eve, and I've, and, and I know you said you've been misquoted, but I've actually seen the letter, is it possible that on Christmas Eve, sending a letter out to employees that you plan on deleting their positions might have been something that you regret and shouldn't have done?
I don't know what letter you're talking about.
We've got, we've got communication from you. I don't have it with me. I'm going to go look that up though, because, uh, we've got communication specifically to you saying, notifying of your intent when you come in. And you say you're going to replace your, your.
I know my two deputies.
Remember you wanted to combine salaries and then have bigger salaries for. Remember, you wanted to combine salaries and then have bigger salaries for your deputies that you were going to bring in? Do you remember that?
I'm not recalling that right now.
Okay. All right, then, I can't, if, if, if you can't come up with a specific thing that you regret in all this time with all of the issues that are swirling around, then I-
I haven't finished answering.
Well, you regret how you interacted with the county clerk that's not here.
Point of information, Mr. Chair, if I may, did you show up at the transition meeting? Because McComb Daily clearly has a picture in article that you did not. So you are lying.
No.
You are a consistent liar.
The clerk said no.
I'm not asking you anything. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
And the person that set up the meeting was told that the clerk herself said no, so I could not participate.
Okay.
All right. Just to my, and my point, I could, I could list 20 things right now over the years I regret on votes or how I've treated people or what I've said. And I didn't hear from you that you can think of a single person, thing as you're sitting up here. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Leonetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is going to be a real simple yes or no question. We talked, this focus is talking about your managerial rights, and you've brought this up, and this was the first question I asked you this afternoon, you know, your idea of managerial rights and the way you want to run your department. And you said, you were elected and you came in with a dream of trying to run the department a certain way. This is a yes or no question. Do you believe that your management of the McComb County Clerk's Department is direct result of us now being behind 4,400 lien entries? Is that a direct result of your management style? Yes or no?
I would say no.
Okay. Do you believe that your management style is a direct result causing us to be behind at least a month in e-filing? Yes or no?
Taking the responsibility would be yes.
For e-filing, it's a yes, but for the lien entry system, it's a no. That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Commissioner Majek. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sager.
All I can say is we got a brand-new treasure who I never knew, all new people. They come in and it's running just smooth as water. We got a brand-new clerk comes in, and my God, we're up and down them hills. I can't understand it. Something isn't right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sager. So I'm pretty much wrapped up on the questions that I have for you. I don't know if any other commissioners have any more. I do have one, I'm sorry, just one more, and it comes to recording of documents in the register of deeds office, and it was section J, and the answer is J4. Basically, what do you attribute the answer to? What do you attribute the backlog of recording the records in the register of deeds office? And I'm going to, I'm going to skip through a little bit of the answer, but it says, "A full data report is not available because it is not budgeted to produce the same flow of work depending on staffing levels, the effectiveness of the workers' various literary day by day." I'm not sure exactly what that answer means on there. Most of the answers I understood, but if you would look under J4 and ask, and the answer to what you attributed the register of deeds being so far behind to, because the register of deeds office, I mean, we've been getting calls, the commissioner's office has, the executive's office has, from people that own funeral homes, people that have driven in to get documents such as death certificates and marriage, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, that's a different one. But we get calls all the time on all of the different filings going on. I would like to be able to give them a better answer as to the reason that there's a backlog in especially the register of deeds.
Both departments are totally independent of each other. We're in a new building in one room. Where registered deeds came from, the employees would share their desk and share the equipment. In the new building, most of the employees do have a desk. With vital records, we don't have enough, I call them workstations. Cashiering is an issue in this new building or new room. The design doesn't serve the purpose of either department adequately.
So it's functionality of the-
Functionality is one of the issues.
That's one of the answers. Okay, I didn't read that in this answer.
The other issue would be, there was a few retirements in registered deeds that really were veterans, and to teach what they knew wasn't done during this period of time. And when I came into office, you just don't learn it in this timeframe. It took many, many, many years to get to that level. They're not behind according to how the paperwork is done in the registered deeds. We are behind in the workload for vital records.
Okay.
There's a difference in the two departments.
So my last question is, and this just has to do with the temporary restraining off, or, I mean, order, that I just want to make sure that publicly, and I know you've had to say this before, but you intend to comply with the temporary restraining order entered by Judge Kelly earlier in this week?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have anyone else up on the list for any questions. So I'm going to close this hearing. I'd like to thank you for coming here and giving us the answers, at least to the best of your ability.
I do have a closing remark.
Is it short?
Yes.
Okay. All right, please.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. The insights and the questions were very challenging for me to answer. I've learned more about how the intent of these questions were driven to get an answer. Sometimes the answer has to be truthful, and my three questions I'll leave with you that if you think about, is it necessary, is it kind, and is truthful? So thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 10, Finance Committee Recommendations. Motion by Majek, support by Commissioner Drolet. Oh, I'm sorry, we need a motion to receive and file. I'm sorry, I skipped over that. Some, motion to receive and file.
It's as supplemented today.
What's that?
It's as supplemented today.
Right, so we're going to receive and file the, the report as supplemented by today's hearing. That's moved by Commissioner Carabelli, supported by Commissioner Tocco.
I have a question about that.
And then you can have a question.
What is the process going forward with the information that we've received today? I mean, as a board?
Well, we are going to take some of these, we're waiting for some answers from her still.
Well, I don't know that we gave very clear direction on what we need. I mean, this lien issue is a big problem. We need to have answers on that.
We do have a court case going on about the lien, the process right now. We have a mandamus going on with the court. Yeah, and, go ahead, Scott, if you'd like to.
If I could, what I would suggest we do is go back and study the information that's been provided. Staff is going to go back and compile the additional questions and the request for additional information, and we will transmit that to the clerk and get more information prior to your next meeting. We will, to the extent we need to, study the tape and/or create transcripts of portions of the tape and of the meeting and work from there, and then work with Chair Smith to come back with some recommendations at your meeting in, I think, December 11th, isn't it? Does that, that make sense as a-
It does, but I want this lien issue, I want the urgency of this lien issue to be addressed.
Well, I think Chair Smith is correct there that that was addressed pretty particularly in the temporary restraining order that Ms. Springer said she intends to comply with. So my guess is we will be seeing some progress on that in the coming days, and we'll be going back and forth with the court to find out about that. Just as after yesterday's meeting, we followed up with the court to find out whether her numbers were correct from the court's perspective, we will continue to monitor that. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Brown, I see you on here. Do you want to speak to this receiving file?
Yeah, I want to speak to the request for gathering information. Chair, Commissioner Tocco, and the whole board's concerned about the lien issue. Can we ask the chair if there's been any incidents relating to the lien that cause any problems or concerns that he has?
We can, and we will.
Because obviously, that's a, it's obviously, it's obviously a liability, it's a danger that's out there presently, and maybe there's already been some situations that cause us a problem that we don't even, not even aware of. Thank you.
Commissioner Kleinfeld.
Yeah, I just want to set the record straight on something because I have the document, and I said New Year's Eve, it was December 21st. And in this memo from Karen Springer, she indicates the administrative secretary position is to be eliminated, the administrative coordinator is to be eliminated, all four supervisor of records positions are to be eliminated, all vacant positions will be eliminated, the clerical supervisor position will be eliminated. She then goes on to talk about how she will have five chief deputies. She considers at-will positions people she's going to bring in after she has eliminated those positions. Chief Deputy Register of Deeds, Chief Deputy Clerk, Chief Deputy Court Clerk, Chief Deputy Election Clerk, and the newly created position of Chief Deputy Quality Assurance and Regulatory Affairs Specialist. So this is the document that I'm talking about that right before Christmas, Clerk Springer, you put out indicating to employees right before Christmas that it was your intent to eliminate them and their positions without having any idea how long they've been here, what they do, what their experience was. So I just want to set the record straight. That's what I was talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kleinfeld. Nothing inspires harmony like that. Any other, any other speakers? Commissioner Leonetti, we good? Okay, so we'll take a vote. We have a motion to receive and file. Motion passes.